It is four o'clock. This is Monday, January 9th, 2023, in the Salina City Commission Weekly Meeting. I asked the city clerk for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. All who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move right into awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, recognition of January 16, 2023, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Day in the City of Salina. Reverend Martha Murchison, retired, will read the proclamation.
Reverend Murchison, I'll skip the retire part. I've been told pastors and reverends never retire.
I won't tell. The proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., 2023. Whereas, the 16th day of January is the birthday anniversary of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas, Dr. King stood before the entire world as a man of peace, champion of human dignity, and an example of love and brotherhood. And whereas, the citizens of Salina do recognize Dr. King's contribution to the good of all humankind, and they do desire to perpetuate and implement the ideals expressed in his dream of peace and harmony among all individuals. And whereas, in paying tribute to Dr. King, we are reminded that the duty lies with each of us to fulfill the vision of his life's work. Let us strive for the dream as we use our time, talents, and resources to get back to our community and help those less fortunate than us. Particularly today, let us not forget Dr. King's own tireless spirit and efforts as we work, celebrate, and pray alongside people of all backgrounds. As one people, let us rediscover the bonds of love and loyalty that bring us together as Americans and as people who share a common humanity. Now therefore, I, Trent Davis, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the day of January 16, 2023, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Day, and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in extending recognition and honor to the memory of this great leader of humankind and witness whereof. I have hereto set my hand and call the seal of the City of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this day, January 9, 2023.
Thank you so, so very much. I know there are some special events to commemorate Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and we're going to hear of some of them now.
Good afternoon. Ramona Malone, and I just want to share our theme for this year, which is striving for the dream. On today, we are beginning, kicking off with the reading of the proclamation. On next Sunday, January 15, at 3:30 PM, the citywide celebration will be at St. John's Lutheran Church, and our speaker will be Reverend Carl Frazier, who is the pastor of New Hope and Love Community and Board, and Community Church, and board member of the Center of Peace and Justice Church in Topeka. On Monday, the 16th, at 12 noon, at St. John's Missionary Baptist Church, is our youth event, and it will be, the celebration will feature Trent Davis Jr. and musical entertainment, usually by the, the schools. And then at 7:00 PM, Kansas Wesleyan University will climax the entire celebration with speaker Dr. Jennifer Gordon, who's retired elementary school administrator at Topeka Public Schools and a product of USD 305. And Vice President and Secretary of the Dunbar Schools Alumni Association will be their speaker on that evening. Our afternoon program will be beyond exciting. We will have representations from all facets, facets of the community, and just look forward to just celebrating and have, we have, do have buttons available, and would like to present those to each of the commissioners right now.
Thank you. And if she come forward, Reverend Murchison, if you could come forward, and we'll get a picture. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Ms. Malone was a bit modest. Donations to the Martin Luther King Jr. Ad-Hoc Committee can be made, and you can see her or look at it on, online or at the ceremony on Monday. Historically, the donations go to two or three public service agencies such as Salina Food Bank, or Ashby House, or similar agencies in town. We will now move to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of December 19, 2022. Item 5.2, approve resolution number 23-8105, a resolution to receive and accept the 2022 Salina Land Bank Conveyance Report.
Right, is there any item that a commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda? In that case, entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
They moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you. We'll now move to administration, 6.1.
Item 6.1, approve resolution number 23-8102, dissolving the Police Chief's Excellence Fund Advisory Board, concurring with the, the assumption of the duties of the Board by the newly established Police Excellence Foundation of Salina, the transfer of all contributions on account with the Greater Salina Community Foundation to the newly established foundation, and termination of the GSCF account, reiterating the policy of the city regarding approval by the city of expenditures of contributions for tangible assets to be owned by the city, and repealing resolution number 16-7409.
Mr. Skry.
After that item description, I'm not much, not sure how much more there is to report. That was a lengthy one, but I will try to kind of explain what's going on here. In November of 2016, the governing body authorized creation of the Police Chief's Excellence Fund Advisory Board, and then the corresponding fund with the, the Greater Salina Community Foundation. In general, the intent was to create a fundraising opportunity or, or organization that could raise funds outside of the, the city budget for the police department for things that supported law enforcement and, and the police department. The resolution or the formation itself identified two purposes. One, fundraising in support of the fund, and then use of contributions that will enhance the, the capacity of the Salina Police Department. And at its outset, it was set up as a police chief board, which is a little unusual, but it was in recognition of, of kind of getting things off the ground and trying to facilitate this approach. And so it was identified as the Police Chief's Excellence Fund Advisory Board. It had seven members to be appointed by the chief of police, and the resolution also then included that the governing body would have a role in reviewing and accepting ownership of any tangible assets prior to the expenditure of contributions to the fund. So, you know, if they wanted to give us something, much like we have similar conversations in public-private partnerships and parks and elsewhere, is that something that we want to take on as an ongoing maintenance obligation? So it, it created that, that additional step of review and approval. In the intervening six years since the board's been formed, they, they are now well-established. They're, they're self-sustaining. They've been successful in raising funds, and, and I think there's about 14 items that I listed there in the staff report of things that those funds have gone towards. I won't read all those to you, but there were some significant purchases in, in terms of a Motoshot Moving Target System in, in the simulator, which I think many of you are familiar with at the law enforcement training center. I also purchased a UTV for the department. They provided financial support to the Police Department Annual Awards Banquet. They did a number of morale building, or funded a number of morale-building efforts, and then they also provided financial support to individual officers based on unique circumstances and challenges that came up. And so the, the board, the members have been very active in fundraising. They've been very successful in fundraising. They've been very supportive of the department. So there, the initial formation of it required a higher level of authority and involvement and oversight on the part of the chief of police, and the board would now like to pursue alternatives that can earn them interest on their funds. The, the funds that are on deposit with the Greater Salina Community Foundation don't rise to the level of an endowed fund. Greater Salina Community Foundation made their services available to assist, but they don't necessarily earn interest. And so when the conversation came up about transitioning to some alternate format as related to the investments, that was going to necessitate an amendment to the approval for that reason, and that then prompted us to have conversations about whether they were self-sufficient enough that it made sense to no longer be a Police Chief's Excellence Fund, but just be a standalone organization. They've taken the necessary steps to incorporate as a standalone not-for-profit entity, so they're now ready to function in that capacity. And I did want to point out that the attached resolution then concurs with their request and authorizes the dissolution of the Police Chief's Excellence Fund Advisory Board, the transfer of donated funds on, that are now on account with the Greater Salina Community Foundation to this newly established body, and it does retain the governing body's role in needing to approve receipt of tangible assets that might be purchased to the board, by the board and donated. At the moment, there is $93,647.90 on, on deposit with the Greater Salina Community Foundation, so that's the amount that would be transferred. I, I want to be clear, those are donated funds raised by the members of the board, so that's not, those weren't city funds in, in any way. They were just placed on deposit with the Greater Salina Community Foundation in that, that original format that we had. So transferring them is really taking those donations and continuing to make them available to that board to then recommend uses in keeping with their, their articles of incorporation of, of supporting the, the Salina Police Department. So no real fiscal expense to the city. I touched on it earlier, but the format of the police chief, appointing, appointing a board and having them be a police chief's board is a little awkward, but felt necessary to kind of get things started. Now that they're well-established, it's an opportunity to transition to a more standalone support organization that's independent. So the item, the, the actions that are identified there for your consideration are that you could approve resolution 238102, dissolving the Police Chief's Excellence Fund Advisory Board, concurring with the assumption of the duties by the newly established board, transferring the contributions from the Greater Salina Community Foundation to that, that foundation, and retaining your oversight and, and concurrence with any donation of tangible assets. You could make amendments as you see fit to the resolution. You can postpone consideration and to a specific date and time and provide us with additional guidance on any additional information that you might want to help with your consideration. You could vote to deny the resolution, which would result in retaining the Police Chief's Excellence Fund in its current form. Doesn't necessarily prevent the, the group from continuing to be incorporated and solicit donations on their own outside of the, the, the Greater Salina Community Foundation. It essentially would take the funds that are on deposit, and it would be a fund until those were spent down. Byron Norris has been instrumental on behalf of the board and as part of these conversations, and he is in attendance today, so I think he may have some, some remarks for you as well, but with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Well, I am Byron Norris, and I am a board member. I'm actually the president of the Police Excellence Foundation of Salina. I, I guess the one thing in, in my conversations with Mr. Shrag, I, I want to make sure that the commission understands that this change, and, and there is a change that you are about ready to approve. There's in no way any ill feelings or animus between our organization and the Greater Salina Community Foundation. This is truly an effort. Now that we understand as a board more about what our process is and the success, as Mr. Shrag alluded to, that we have been able to have, we feel a little bit more prepared in order to stand on our own two feet. So we went about and formed our own 501(c)(3), have made the Greater Salina Community Foundation aware of this entire process throughout. Jessica Martin has been extremely supportive. I would be remiss if I did not tell you how much we appreciate what the Greater Salina Community Foundation has done for us, because truly, as six years ago when we were forming this board, none of us knew what we were doing. I might intimate, we still don't know exactly what we're doing, but we're a little more prepared, and without the Greater Salina Community Foundation, we would not, we would not be where we are today and have been able to provide to the City of Salina through the Police Department several items that I know have been utilized and will be continued to be utilized into the, into the future. So with that being said, I don't have anything more to say other than I hope you understand what this process that we're wanting to have you approve is, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions if there be any.
I don't really have a question per se, but just wanted to make sure the public understands that the city commission still has the, not just the right, but the responsibility to approve or decide to not accept any, I'll call it donation, for lack of a better term. And that does not change with the financial.
That does not change, and you're exactly right, Mayor. Whenever we purchase anything, and I, and I would, I think you understand the process. This has always been under the advisement of the chief of police. Anything that we purchase has been in conference with that individual and will continue to be so in the future. But then we understand that it has to come before this board, before it becomes actual, because it does become then, at that point, city property, and you certainly have that responsibility to accept or decline that, so.
Thank you.
And that, and that will not change.
Okay. Any other questions?
How will board members be chosen for this board for the future?
You know, I guess it's the process that we, there is nothing formally in place. We are trying to, and, and there is a member who has been an initial member who has moved out of the community, and their term is going to expire in the next month or so. So we are about to replace that individual. We're trying to secure, because again, this is all about raising money and going to people in the community with those kinds of resources and make that appeal to them. So having that kind of knowledge and contact is something that we're looking at. That doesn't mean that we're always looking at those things, but that's something that's pretty paramount. I, I would also want the commission to know that, I know there's been a couple of times when Chief Nelson, particularly with the Vertra, has a quarter of a million dollar piece of equipment, and when he brought that to our attention one day in our group of six people, I don't know how the other five felt, but I know that I had this sinking feeling that how are we going to raise quarter of a million dollars? But I would like you to think that that was a really hard task to do, but by benevolence of this community and the people that are here that want to support the police department in Salina, that was not a hard task to do whatsoever. So I think that's important for you to know that, and that's certainly our goal to continue that, and hoping that we can find those kinds of individuals that also share that with us.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, comments from the public? No hands raised on?
Go.
I'm sorry, do have. Come on forward.
I wish to help for Salina, Kansas. I was just curious to make sure that this was under the COMA Act as far as their open meetings and whatnot.
I know I don't know the answer to that question.
As we've conducted the Police Chief's Excellence Fund, it, it was. As a private entity, it wouldn't be subject to COMA, because they would be separate and distinct from the city.
Although my constituents know, thank you.
All right. Any action to be taken?
Mayor, I'd like to, while we're talking about police, comment that I found out today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and so thank you to all of our law enforcement officers, and I don't think the, we realize how fortunate we are to have a foundation like this, because I, I've seen and, and got to play with some of the things they have funded, and it is very, very beneficial. So we do thank them, and I would move that we approve resolution number 23-8102, dissolving the Chief's Excellence Fund Advisory Board, concurring with the assumption of the duties of the Board by the newly established Police Excellence Foundation of Salina, the transfer of all contributions on account with the Greater Salina Community Foundation to the newly established foundation, and termination of the GSCF count, reiterating the policy of the city regarding approval by the city of expenditures of contributions for tangible assets to be owned by the city, and repealing resolution 16-7409.
Second. Thanks. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 23-8102. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you. We'll move on to development business, 7.1.
Item 7.1, approve ordinance number 23-11142 on first reading for an application filed by Kansas Wesleyan University requesting a change in zoning district classifications from R2 district to PDD district, and approve a preliminary final development plan for Phase 1 and Phase 1A of the proposed coyote row. Oh, proposed coyote row. I'm going to stop there.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This is an application that was filed by Kansas Wesleyan University, involves two components. One is a change in zoning district classification to create a planned development district for a cluster housing project, and then as part of that planned development district, a preliminary, combined preliminary and final development plan for Phase 1 and Phase 1A of what Kansas Wesleyan hopes may become a larger student housing village. The property that we're talking about this afternoon is located at the southwest corner of Highland Avenue and Claflin Avenue. It comprises five platted lots, most of which were occupied by housing at one point in time. All the homes have been removed except for one home at 1608 Highland, which remains in place. That is a two-story home that was constructed in 1920, and that will continue to be used by the university for housing for the near future. If this sounds somewhat familiar, it's because Kansas Wesleyan proposed something on a smaller scale in the spring of 2021, and that plan just involved the, the northernmost lot, which was only 40 feet wide, and because of that, there were multiple variances that were presented to the Board of Zoning Appeals and a conditional use permit plan approved by the Planning Commission. The city actually issued a building permit for that project in September of 2021, but that permit expired without any construction occurring. So now they have come back in 2022 with an expanded student housing village. Instead of three dwellings on a single lot, they've expanded it to five platted lots and to seven dwellings that would be constructed in Phase 1, and then up to 10 in Phase 1A. And so these are 556-square-foot, single-family dwelling units. They'd be two stories. Each of them have five bedrooms for students, and the total area that this would cover is a little over 30,000 square feet. And so in Phase 1, they would have the seven dwelling units and retain the single-family dwelling at 1608 Highland. As they moved to Phase 1A, they would demolish that existing dwelling at 1608 Highland and replace it with three additional single-family dwellings to match the units proposed in Phase 1. So you are being asked to approve both Phase 1 and Phase 1A this evening so that Kansas Wesleyan would not have to come back for further approvals to do Phase 1A. So they requested a number of variations because of the way they're locating the units, and so they have got reduced setbacks along Claflin and along Highland Avenue. They have reduced setbacks between the units, and then they are proposing to put a total of 12 individual dwelling units on a single zoning lot. So although there's five platted lots here, those lot lines are not relevant since this is a, a cluster-type development. So Kansas Wesleyan does not own all of this block. There's still some scattered other ownerships in here, but their, their housing project for the time being would be concentrated between Highland Avenue and this alley that bisects the property. And in 2021, they were a little more specific about the design and color scheme for the housing units. At the Planning Commission meeting, they indicated that they have not chosen final colors for the individual units, but that the units will have metallic roofs that will be bronze in color, and so they don't have a particular color scheme. As far as off-street parking, this is a dated aerial photo, but they have now constructed a parking lot that contains 54 spaces at the northwest corner of Claflin and Highland, and so the parking for students that would be living in these facilities would be available in that parking lot across the street. There was some discussion at the Planning Commission about landscaping and where that landscaping should be, and that has been resolved with a revised plan. So at the December 20th Planning Commission meeting, at the conclusion of their hearing, they made two recommendations for you to consider this evening. They voted seven to zero to recommend that the zoning map of the city be amended to change the zoning classification of this corner lot from R2 to a planned development district, and then they recommended approval of four of the five requested variations or modifications to the zoning regulations. The one they did not recommend approval of was a variation to allow the project landscaping to be located in the Highland and Claflin right-of-way instead of on the project site. And so that was their recommendation as to zoning. As to the plan itself, they recommended approval of a preliminary and final plan for Phase 1 and Phase 1A of the student housing village, subject to five conditions, which are outlined on, on your report on page 15, and then also incorporated into the ordinance. I would call attention to commish, condition. call attention to condition number one on Page 15, where the Planning Commission required that Kansas Wesleyan revise their preliminary final development plan to show all their front-yard landscaping being located on the Coyote Row project site with any plantings located in the public right-of-way being classified as campus streetscape beautification. And so they have addressed that by submitting a revised plan that meets the intent of what the Planning Commission was after. So that that condition is not really relevant at this point because it's already been addressed by Kansas Wesleyan. The other four conditions would still be in place. So we have prepared an ordinance with findings, based on the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. And if you were to approve that ordinance, that would approve the zoning change as well as the preliminary development plan. And that could be done with three affirmative votes. If you disagree with the recommendation coming to you from the Planning Commission, you could return this item to the Planning Commission and state your reasons for your disagreement. And that would take three affirmative votes. You could postpone consideration of this item with three affirmative votes, or you could overturn the recommendation of the Planning Commission and deny this application if there's four votes in support of denial. And then you would need to adopt alternate findings that would support denial instead of approval. So as we noted, the plan that's in the packet there is linked to this ordinance, and so that plan is binding on Kansas Wesleyan. You can approve it as proposed, approve it subject to minor revisions, or you can send it back to the Planning Commission if you think it needs a major reworking. So again, if you act on this this evening, they would be, have the ability to do Phase 1 with the seven dwellings and then come back and do Phase 1A at the time of their choosing. If they expand this housing village further, that may come back for further city commission review. But this is a plan for five lots at the southwest corner of Highland and Claflin. And I would stand for any questions that commissioners might have.
Any questions? Listen.
What is... Are the other living units on the campus in the university designation?
They are zoned under the university designation. The dormitories are...
I wouldn't just fall into that as well.
It conceivably could have. It's just because it was specifically housing. It is... We were... Our R2 District has more specific standards for housing that fit better with this, but should they? And also because it was being done as a planned development district. But there certainly, once this settles and what their expansion plans are, out to Ninth Street, it might make sense at some point to make the zoning more universally the same as university designation for all their holdings. But this was already R2, and it was specifically for housing, so we left it at that.
Under the university designation, would all the same setbacks, bulk requirements be the same?
It would actually, the setbacks would actually be greater than what the R2 would be. So it'd be even, greater variations would be required.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments from the public? All right. Any action to be taken?
Mayor, excuse me. Mayor Davis, I move, we concur with the findings and recommendation of the Planning Commission, Ordinance Number 23-11142, rezoning the southwest corner of Highland Avenue and Claflin Avenue to PDD R2, approving on first reading.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve on first reading, Ordinance 23-11142. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, nothing. And I presume that would come back January 23rd?
Yeah, come back the 23rd for a second.
Okay, thank you. We'll now go to 7.2.
Item 7.2, consider acceptance of the offered street right-of-way easement and restricted access dedications from Stone Lake Development LLC to serve Stone Lake Edition Number 2, a proposed 48-lot subdivision of a 52.3-acre tract of land located east and south of the Stone Lake Sandpit Lake.
Mayor Davis, due to conflict, I am going to recuse myself from 7.2 and 7.3.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mayor Commissioners. This is before you this evening to consider the acceptance of offered public street right-of-way easement and restricted access dedications coming from Stone Lake Development LLC. It's made up of Kelly Dunn, Craig Piercy, and Todd Roberg. And those dedications are to serve a proposed 48-lot subdivision located in the southeast corner, east and south of the existing Sandpit Lake. And what is referred to as the Stone Lake property is 150-plus-acre tract of land, and it was originally platted in 2010. And when that plating occurred in 2010, the original owner, the Sandpit Company, had not completed its reclamation activities over in this corner of the property. So that was not included in the final plat. This property was part of an acquisition that was made by Stone Lake Development LLC in 2019. And they have been developing the original subdivision in phases. And you have a phasing plan or phasing map in your packet. And then they have now come forward to plat the remainder of the property. They originally filed this application in April to zone and plat this property. It came before the city commission in June of 2022, and you recommended approval of an ordinance rezoning this property to R single-family, R1 single-family, and R2 multifamily for townhomes. At that meeting, you also approved an ordinance that changed some of the street names in the existing Stone Lake Edition and the street names in this area. And so the developers have filed this application. There's 52 acres, but 35 of them are developable and 17 are occupied by the lake. So the net developable acres is about 36 acres. They're proposing 48 lots. And the lots that would back up to Schilling Road, which is actually on the left-hand side of your drawing, these lots in here would be zoned R2 for townhome construction. The inner lots backing up to the lake would be R single-family, a larger lot zoning district. And then these lots here would be R1, which is for more modest-sized lots. And so they are planning to maintain and operate the lake in the same fashion as they had in Phase 1. As far as direct-access perimeter streets, that would be, in this case, Ohio Street and not Schilling Road because Schilling Road does not provide any direct access into the subdivision because of its current condition. But there's two platted street access points into Stone Lake, which are Shoreline Drive on Ohio and Crystal Place, which is being constructed as part of the next phase of development in Stone Lake. There is no proposed street access points because of the current unapproved condition of Schilling Road. Schilling Road is currently owned and maintained by Saline County as part of an interlocal agreement between the city and the county. And that status would not change unless there's a new interlocal agreement that would replace the current one. So we have two points into this area. We have a connection over here that would come from this location, that would come in from the west, and then a continuation of this street in. So there's two looped connections. As we noted, earlier this year, you approved a change where this over here would become Piravita Drive on the north-south leg and Vista Sur Drive on the east-west leg. So those would become street names in this particular segment. And then as far as another point of access, they have provided an emergency access road right about in this location to provide emergency access into this area from Schilling Road. And that has been provided with a width of 60 feet. So should we have the fortune of having Schilling Road paved at some point in the future, then that has sufficient width where you could put a public street connection there. So it'll start out as an emergency access road for the fire department, but should things work out, it could be converted to a public street connection at a later time. The... There would be no driveways allowed on Schilling Road. That is the restricted access dedication. And then they are dedicating a number of utility easements for interior extension of utilities. And then the, this lake is contained in a large drainage easement. The developers indicate that this area will be merged into an expanded Stone Lake Homeowners Association, would be subject to the same covenants and architectural controls as the original subdivision. They have also indicated that they will be coming forward to the city commission to utilize special assessment financing to finance the internal improvements for this subdivision. But at this point in time, there would be no fiscal impact to the city from approval of this except for the ongoing maintenance of public streets, water, and sewer lines, once those are built and accepted. So this was also considered by the Planning Commission at their December 20th meeting. They voted seven to zero to approve the plat, subject to a number of conditions that are outlined in your report. And so if you concur with that action, a motion should be made to accept the offered street right-of-way easement and restricted access dedications and authorize the mayor to sign the plat on behalf of the city. And the alternative, you could decline to accept the dedications and return this plat to the Planning Commission, stating your reasons for not wishing to accept the offered right-of-way easement and restricted access dedications. We do have the applicants and their engineer here. If you have any questions. I can report that I was informed today that the new street signs have been delivered. And so what our process is on a situation like that, we have a standing notice list of 17 agencies that we officially inform of a street name change, as well as the residents themselves, which we've had a lot of individual contact with them. But each resident who is affected will get an official letter from the city that will be copied into Kansas Gas Service, Evergy, the post office, county offices, informing them that the name change is now official because we didn't want to have crews directed out there and have street signs that didn't reflect what the actual street name was. So those will be installed this week, and we'll close the book on the street name change. So with that, I'd be open to any other questions that you have.
Any questions?
So we're going to end up here with residents on both sides of Schilling Road, and Schilling Road is going to continue to be a county-maintained road. Is that correct?
It is going to be, continue to be a county-maintained road unless there's a point at which the city and county commissions sit down and negotiate a new interlocal agreement for how they want to maintain the roads. When Schilling Road was rebuilt between Schilling, between Ohio and Ninth Street, almost none of that was in the city limits. And the city commission agreed to take over ownership and maintenance of Schilling Road from Ohio to Ninth Street in exchange for Saline County agreeing to take ownership and maintenance responsibility for Schilling Road east of Ohio. And that has not changed. So they own the road.
And the secondary access to Ohio, this Crystal, that's under construction now?
It is being done as part of the next development Phase 4 that's currently in the works for Stone Lake, the original Stone Lake.
It might be worth noting the drainage easement on the south side of Schilling as well, that precludes development right up to Schilling?
So there's, as part of, it was all done as a result of the 1993 floods, which inundated most of South Salina. And the city and county received funding, essentially elevated Schilling Road to turn it into a levee. And then a large ditch was constructed on the south side of Schilling Road. And that ditch diverts water coming from mentor area in the south and sends it directly east to the river to keep it out of the city. So there is a fairly large ditch on almost the entire south side of Schilling Road, even extending east of Ohio. And that ditch precluded the Ryan Edition from being able to connect to Schilling Road. The other thing is that the far eastern part of that, almost all of that is owned by Saline County, south of Schilling Road. And it's also in a giant drainage easement, which precludes development because it's essentially a large dry-bottom detention area on the south side of Schilling Road, east of Ohio. So very little of the property on the south side of Schilling is developable.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions?
Just out of curiosity, how long does it take for these name changes to be recognized by GPS services?
Well, it should happen quickly. Once the official letter goes out, it's been hit and miss at this point in time. So we have been doing our building permits and our certificates of occupancy under the new street names, but most of the agencies are waiting for the official letter before they change their records. But I know the county GIS has changed some of its records to reflect the new names.
Just curious.
We try, the reason we do the letter that goes to 17 agencies is once, to try to keep it as uniform and not hit and miss as possible.
All right. Thank you. Does not look like we have anyone online with a hand raised. Anyone here in the room with any questions or comments? Or did the applicant wish to come for, at your discretion?
Yeah. Excuse me. Kelly Dunn, 1216 Shoreline Drive. And I want to thank you for considering our action here and be glad to answer any questions that you have. I would like to, I would like to say we would wish and hope for an interlocal agreement for Schilling, something to be done with Schilling Road. There's, you know, in that general area, there's going to be roughly 300 houses with the dirt road in between all of them. So it gets pretty dusty out there with the Kansas wind. So we would wish and hope for something like that to happen. But other than that, I can answer any questions.
Right. This sand and gravel trucks still travel that road?
Yeah. The Johnson Sandpit is at the, out by, on the other side of the dike out there.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Any action to be taken by the commission?
Mayor, I move that the, we should concur with the action of the Planning Commission and move that we should make or accept the offered street right-of-way easement and restricted access dedications and authorize the mayor to sign the plat on behalf of the city.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to accept the offered street right-of-way easement. easement and restricted access dedications from Stone Lake Development. And to sign the plat on behalf of the city. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four, nothing. Thank you. Now 7.3.
Excuse me, item 7.3, consider acceptance of the offered street right-of-way easement and restricted access dedications to serve Magnolia Hills Estates, Edition Number Three, a proposed 112-lot subdivision of a 46.84 acre tract of land located on the west side of Holmes Road, north of Magnolia Road.
Sorry, the planning commission had a busy agenda on the 20th of December, so they're bringing one more item to you. We've kind of summarized in there the insoluble problem that has been finally solved through the creation of a benefit district, but there's been a lot of city staff time and applicant time and others wrestling with the issues and costs associated with upgrading Holmes Road to a suitably improved condition. I think Mr. Byquist may recall this as well. I think he first filed the plat to extend the plating over to Holmes Road in 2007. And so here we are in 2023, and I, we think we have a resolution for it. But a good part of the front portion of the report is just discussing how we arrived at solutions for Holmes Road, changes that were made to the city's subdivision regulations, dealing with frontage and access and improvements of what is referred to as perimeter streets. And in this case, Holmes Road is considered to be the perimeter street for this development. And so there's, it's a single subdivision, but it's got two segments to it. It's got this main body, which is an extension of Magnolia Hills Estates, Number Two. And then it has, what I refer to in the report is this peninsula that extends down to this location. So they have, they're now ready to move forward with their final plating of their remaining land holdings in this quarter section. And this is a 46.84 acre tract. It's bounded 2,400 feet of frontage on Holmes Road on the east. It's got the first covenant church site here on the, on the west and south. And then there is agricultural land all along the east side of Holmes Road. As proposed, this would be subdivided into 112 residential lots. There'd be 62 lots in that northern portion up in here that would all be zoned R1 for single family. This peninsula area is proposed to be R2. R2 allows for townhomes and duplexes, but there are occasions when builders will choose to build single-family homes on R2 zone lots. So it could, could be a mix of single and two-family, but the higher densities are proposed in, in this area here. On June 27th of this year, you approved an ordinance rezoning this property on first reading, subject to satisfactory plating. And you recommended this R1 zoning pattern here, which is an extension of what's happening in Edition Number Two, and then R2 for this abutting Holmes Road, Magnolia and the church. And so the direct access perimeter street for this subdivision is Holmes Road. And this property is required to have at least two, or at least one public street connection to Holmes Road. And the developers are responsible for upgrading Holmes Road to city street standards. So on this plan, we actually have the primary, this is Stone Post Lane. It comes down and would intersect here. This is Ridge Hill Drive. That would be a second point of connection to Holmes Road. And then there's a third street connection into the area on, on Magnolia Road. And so they have integrated this subdivision in with the existing street network. They pretty much followed the topography and, and terrain, and they're laying out of the streets. This, as I noted, would have 2,400 feet of frontage on Holmes Road. And so there's 1,300 feet here and 1,100 feet here of frontage. And so the main driving force on the layout of this property is that the city has an interceptor sewer line. That interceptor sewer line runs up Magnolia Road, then it runs up Markley, then it runs across the middle of this property. And about halfway through, it turns into a gravity line. And so there's a gravity interceptor sewer line that runs through here and comes out, goes across Holmes Road, follows that creek to the sewage treatment plant. So they, they have laid this out and they have put a, a street over that sewer line here. We try to avoid as much as possible having the interceptor sewer in people's backyards because it can be difficult to get to. It's large and fairly deep. So part of their design was to try to lay as much of this street over the sewer line as they can. So it does appear that their street network matches well with the existing street mount. It matches with the topography. It has a curve linear design. The current traffic volume on Holmes Road is approximately 225 vehicles per day. And the city staff's conclusion is that any street connection on this plat would trigger a need to upgrade that gravel surface. And the 2016 amendment to the subdivision regulations codifies that as a requirement. And so we have 23 lots that would back up to Holmes Road and four lots that would back up to Magnolia Road. There would be no individual driveways permitted on Holmes Road or Magnolia Road. So they have 112 lots plus a lot for the detention pond. The detention pond has been deeded over to the city for ownership and maintenance, and they paid a city a maintenance fee for us to do that. We have a 16-inch water line in Magnolia, and then there's a 16-inch line that was extended up Magnolia Road. And so they would need to extend that 16-inch line farther to the east to get to the first street connection there and then tie that back to Markley Road. And so that will create a looped system for the entire subdivision. As far as electrical service, at one time, this was in a rural electric cooperative territory, but it has now been turned over to Evergy. And electric and natural gas is available. The detention pond is already built and operational. It's been constructed, inspected, and accepted for maintenance. And so we've provided information there about streets and traffic. But again, any physical street connection to Holmes Road is going to be the trigger for those improvements. They have submitted a phasing plan, which you have in your packet. And so they can probably do a couple of those phases without triggering that improvement. But when they get to phase three, that's when that improvement will come into play. So I would call your attention to page 14. Because this has one of the biggest, bigger fiscal notes that we have had in a, in a plat staff report. And so the primary fiscal impact from approving this rezoning request and companion plat would be to trigger the need to upgrade Holmes Road to an interim street standard once the connection is made. And so that benefit district has been formed. The cost allocations and percentages have been established. And the initial estimate in that, the benefit district was a cost of $2 million, with the shitty, city share being 68.6%. But there are cost escalators that are built into that. And so since that initial estimate in the first part of 2022, that $2 million project has increased to 2.2 million. And I imagine that number will increase over time, not, not decrease, but those estimates are built in. So the cost share is 38.6% and 31.4%. And as an attachment, and this, this number will also grow, but I, I put that also as a information for the applicants, that the proportionate share of a $2 million project, their proportionate share would be $628,849. And if you divide that over their 112 lots, that averages out to an assessment of about $6,000 per lot. So a lot that is in Magnolia Hills Estates, Number Three, if they were able to utilize special assessments for their internal improvements, would have those costs. And then they would also have an additional cost of about $6,000 a lot to help pay for Holmes Road. So that, that would be the primary fiscal impact from their connection to Holmes Road is that that's going to trigger the city's share of making that improvement to the street. They will have internal sidewalks on all their streets. One of the things we've asked them to do, and they have done, is that in addition to the right-of-way for Holmes Road, they've dedicated an additional five feet as a pedestrian easement. And that would allow us the option of constructing a 10-foot hike bike path on the west side of Holmes Road as part of the improvement of that street in lieu of a sidewalk. So the right-of-way and easement area is being provided should we choose to build a hike bike path instead of a conventional sidewalk. So with that and the fiscal note information, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you have. We do have Mr. Dunn and Mr. Byquist here if you have questions of them.
Mr. Langwitz, to the right.
I think we discussed this before, the drainage, you say the drainage retention pond has capacity for all this?
Yes, and it's also accepting water from Wheatland Valley, which is upstream.
Okay. Is it going to flow out of that pond at all? Or is it just going to sit?
No, it's, it is a detention pond, which means it's released at a controlled rate. I don't know if Mr. Wood could go back to aerial photo or not. But there's, there's a, there's a small bridge and a culvert on Holmes Road. Yes, we need this. So if you see this right here, this is, this is an old channel, but there's a crossing right here. And so there's also a pond and a crossing right here. So this pond right here has a discharge, goes under Holmes Road and over to East Dry Creek.
So it'll all eventually flow to that, that channel there?
Yeah, right. It is, it's not designed to retain water, but to hold it temporarily and then discharge it at a controlled rate through here where it ends up in East Dry Creek. And there's a, there's a pond right here for Wheatland Valley, here at Mustang Lane. And that pond will discharge down, go through this pond and then over there as well. But it's been designed to accommodate that.
Could you leave?
For the developers, but what would be the timeline to fill this area?
In terms of how they plan to phase it and their timing for that, I think I would best turn that over to you, what their time frames are.
Standby, Crystalina, thanks for, for hearing our request. I guess I'll try and answer the first one, question from the commissioner. Timeline, to be quite honest, it depends on what the market wants. What, we, we don't know, to be honest. We, we, we would hope sooner than later, but is it going to be four years, five years? I don't, with the housing needs of Salina that look like they're coming, it, it may be more rapid than we know, or it could be slower than we know. But that's, as honest as I can answer this one.
Typically, this would be looking at like a five-year plan?
Oh, typically five years.
Yeah.
You know, it might be faster. I don't know. I hope it's five years.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious how the Holmes Road is going to progress.
Well, I hope it's, hope it's within five years.
Okay.
Somewhat of a related question, it may be more appropriate for Mr. Andrew. Mr. Wood, could you put that last aerial picture that you had back up? When we were first discussing upgrading Holmes Road, the magic line of demarcation that runs north-south was kind of in align with where New Covenant Church is. And we got much further east of that building. That would trigger the development of Holmes Road. And I'm noticing that line of, of triggering is inching east. What happened to the original plan to trigger Holmes Road once we got east of?
Well, historically, what I can say is that we had a plat that was trying to plat this whole area over to Holmes Road.
Right.
And because we had not solved everything related to Holmes Road, we basically chopped it in half and basically said, if you look at it like a, a river basin with tributaries or whatever, we just said, this is the halfway line and everything here west is associated with Markley. Everything from this line east is associated with Holmes Road. So the benefit area for Holmes Road, which there is a map in your packet, the benefit area is this right here. And so that is the property that would be assessed for improvements to Holmes Road. And so that's, it is these 112 lots that will receive assessments and that I estimated about $6,000 per lot.
Right, now that part I get, but maybe I misunderstood, but the street map suggested that Holmes, or your comment suggested Holmes would not be triggered until you got to the easternmost phases?
Well, that would be a decision that, that would ultimately be for the city commission, but
The reason I'm asking is I thought we'd already made that decision.
They're planning to phase this and phase this, that these could continue to go back to the west, and it would be their construction of this phase. And these two segments here that would physically connect to Holmes, and it's that physical connection that would trigger the improvement to Holmes.
They could phase it all they want, but I thought we had decided that once they came east of that line that you alluded to, that Holmes had to be upgraded.
If it's helpful, I think that, as you described, the line of demarcation was the boundary of where plating could occur with or without a plan in place for the perimeter road, Holmes being the perimeter road. And so we didn't move forward with plating on the east side of that line until the benefit district was provided for and we had an agreement in place. But then there's additional timing as to But then there's additional timing as to when the actual Holmes Road improvements-
The agreement was more for the plan than the actual construction of Holmes, right?
Right. We held, we withheld approving a plat beyond that line until we had the necessary benefit district and agreement in place regarding Holmes. But it, it does contemplate a phased approach to development before Holmes is, is improved. There is, the benefit district is broader than that, so there's consensus to, to special assessments that are accounted for to try to assess accordingly.
Right, and one last question. Uh, the fire protection is noted, it's fi- five minutes from Station Four to the north entrance on, uh, Markley Road. I'm assuming then it's a little bit longer to the houses farther away from that nor- it, it, what's the city standard for response time?
I think it's four minutes.
So we're kinda pushing that, uh, even if, I imagine if we relocated Station Four sooner, a few seconds might be shaved, but, uh, uh, does the fire chief have to pass?
That's a response time goal, it's not a hard and fast.
Right, cause it's five minutes to the front door, but most of these houses are in the backyard, uh, which is another minute or two, um, even driving fast. And where, where, where does the fire department have to? Or do we, I'm assuming we ask the fire department if-
Well, as part of our long-term planning, the fire department looks at response areas, response times, and that factors into our station, um, both our staffing deployment in terms of number of staff and number of stations. But, um, four minutes is the goal, this is on the edge of that, but, um, a- and as you said, a relocated fire station may help anomalically, but I don't know that it's gonna make a large difference.
Because when we go to all the fire department, uh, presentations, you know, we're amazed at how quickly fire is spreading and how many, few minutes you have before the second phase of that fire takes over. And are we, how much of this will be putting in danger of having a seven-minute, eight-minute Particularly, I mean, before Holmes Road is opened up.
Well, yes, the one question that we can't answer this evening is whether even when Holmes Road is approved, whether they'll continue to come through the Markley entrance in terms of their responses, or whether they'll go around Magnolia and Holmes, that route. They're gonna choose the closest route in terms of response. So that, that would be a question I'm not equipped to answer, whether they would come through the subdivision or go around it.
Cause I could conceivably see that taking even longer. Uh, you know, corvettes can get up that hill on Magnolia pretty quick, but that fire truck's not gonna, eh, it's, it's gonna take a long time to hit 60 coming up that hill for a fire truck. Uh, is the fire department included in?
Yes, they're, they're part of the review process.
Did they pass on this?
Yes, they did not have expressed any concerns about this development phase in terms of access or location.
But what about the response?
Well, they, they did not indicate that they felt it was outside their range of response.
Okay, and four minutes is our?
I would offer that's the goal. That is not an ironclad edge of, of response. It's-
You know, we, we talk about single access developments, which are a fire risk, and this is the same fire risk. Fortunately, we've been lucky here, we haven't, uh, had a I told you so moment. But, uh, you know, we're, we're planning already for it to be longer than their goal. I'm just a little concerned about that. Not that I have a solution for it, but I'm concerned about it.
Well, it's still undetermined where the new Station Four is gonna be, so hopefully maybe they would take that into account when there's some selection of that process.
Yeah, I, I think i- i- as the community grows, we may be talking about additional stations, which that is, you know, not in the immediate plans, but as we identify growth quarters on the, corridors on the edges, it may force us to have those conversations.
There's no one here from the fire department, is there? All right, any, uh, questions, concerns for members of the public?
Dalton McDowell Salina, I was just looking on Saline County. Holmes Road is under the fire protection of Rule Fire District Five. It stops at Holmes Road actually in town, they do cover some areas in town too. Is this gonna be, is this gonna be District Five? If it's District Five, their minimum is 15 minutes on a voluntary rule fire. Or is it gonna be, or is it going to be under Salina fire?
Yeah, within the city limits, it would be under Salina fire.
Because Holmes Road is right where that cutoff is, they cover some of that on the
Right. As we, as we expand out and develop an annex in, we take it in as our responsibility.
Any other questions, comments? Just have a procedural, uh, question. For, uh, getting an opinion of the fire department regarding their ability to handle the far reaches of this with Station Four where it is currently, is that something that can be added as an amendment without sending it back, you know, for total review to the planning commission?
Depends on whether that's informational on your, uh, just informational request of yours, or whether that impacts whether you wish to take action, but-
I just wanna clarify that when a plat like this comes in, we have a development review team and we do a plat technical review. And that plat is reviewed by the fire department and they provide their comments. And they provide those comments in writing, and the comments they provided to me didn't indicate that they had concerns about their fire response. And they were encouraged by the number of individual access points into the subdivision, so they did not express any concern about their response time when they reviewed this plat. So it's, it's not that they haven't reviewed it or provided any comments, those are just reviewed internally and put together into our report. But they have seen this plat and they have provided written comments and they did not register any concerns.
Okay, and that would be for the phasing of this?
That would be for the total build out to Holmes Road.
Okay, would there be a reason to think the response would be slower before Holmes I guess they would be coming through the, the-
I don't think they took that into account. Their assumption seemed to be that they would come to this area from Stone Post Lane off of Markley, cause that's the closest point of access.
Okay.
And so they have, they have reviewed this, it can be referred to them, but they've already submitted their comments to us in writing.
I think their bigger concern is water pressure. It sounds like, uh, there's plenty of water there.
I guess if I can lean on your experience on the planning commission.
Actually, the thought occurred to me, and it's, it actually pertains more to my first responder experience, um, the computer aided dispatch system, you're not always going to get, depending on what calls people are on, you're not always gonna get response from Station Four. If Station Four is on another call, then they're gonna pull from potentially Three. Um, so it's, first responders aren't always in the station, I guess is where I'm going with that in short. And they're very adaptable, very flexible, and I think a perfect example, um, you know, pat them on the back with that incident at South High with the, with the ditch collapse. I mean, uh, they know what they're doing, they get it done. And I, I don't have any concerns in terms of, of safety for the people in that subdivision, but that's just my opinion.
Your opinion counts.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Uh, no other comments, bring it back, I guess to the four of us for, uh, action.
Mayor, I would make the motion that we should accept the offered street right of way easement and restricted access dedications and to authorize the mayor to sign the plat of Magnolia Hills Estates Three on behalf of the city.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the offered street right of way easement restricted access dedications to, to serve Magnolia Hills Estates Edition Number Three. Uh, and I lost the last part of that, but I think that's enough of the description. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries four, nothing. We will now go to, uh, citizens forum. Uh, oh, we need to get Commissioner Hoppick back, thank you. This is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to address the commission to, uh, come forward. Uh, we ask that you observe the, uh, three-minute, uh, timer clock up front here.
I would, Dalton McDowell Salina, as the town expands and grows, something I don't think the commission really looks at, in my opinion, is every time you add more roads, you're adding more, you need, you're adding more roads for streets to deal with, you're adding more utilities for the utility department to deal with, and you're adding more, you're adding more workload on your departments that are already extremely understaffed. Doing a good job, really good job, being as understaffed as they are. You're at, but they are doing a really good job. I'd also like to, the incident out at South High last Friday was a perfect example on how well the departments will come together and aid one another. Fire department had utilities and public works, both were out there assisting them. I think that was really good. But commissioners, you, when we expand, you're adding more workload to an already extremely short-staffed public works, utilities, and you're not really helping them at all expanding. And how much further can we expand before we have to worry about dykes? Cause I know we're, we've got dykes all around, all over town and still being that flood within the dykes.
Was that a request for a job application?
No.
All right.
Mayor, commissioners, uh, good to see you guys again. Chad Farber, uh, here in Salina. Um, I've, uh, submitted by email my idea, my opinion of this, um, uh, mayoral, uh, decision coming up here in the next few minutes. And, uh, I, I stand by it. I, I think the, the mayoral position here being appointed as opposed to being elected is kind of, um, off-putting for a lot of the citizens here in Salina. And so I would like to, um, uh, continue the request that we do move into some kind of a system where the citizens can elect the mayor and separately have our commissioners represent certain districts of town. I think that would help with the, uh, communication between citizen and this board, this governing body. Um, I also, I, I appreciate Commissioner Hoppick, he has much experience at the position and the papers were put out this past week that, uh, looks like he's gonna be nominated for this, and, and I don't, um, doubt his experience. He's been in this position before, I understand that. Uh, I, I do kind of have a, an issue with how people voted for that, but that is this governing body's decision and the appointment will be made by that. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, uh, I was, I had to watch, uh, after the fact, one of the, uh, study sessions a few weeks ago, and the chamber brought up some interesting facts about, um, new businesses coming to town and, and housing and, and different things like that. And I thought something very interesting at the request of the mayor, if I understood it correctly, was the living wage, um, amounts for Salina. And I extrapolated some of those numbers out for our annual salary, and according to the chamber, the living wage for a single parent with two children is $90,000 a year in Salina. That's a lot of money, and there are not a lot of jobs paying 90,000 a do- 90,000 a year to a single mother or a single dad who is trying to raise two children in our city. And, and I think that needs to be looked at, uh, and consequently, or maybe it was 80,000 and then it was 90,000 for a two-parent, uh, with two children, and, and I can go back and look at those facts. But, uh, we, we need to look at that as a governing body. Uh, some of our citizens are suffering right now financially, uh, some of them are going through some, uh, financial setbacks and trying to recover even from this past year. Um, and, uh, I don't know what exactly the answer is, that's why you get paid the huge big bucks that you get, uh, to make all of these decisions. Uh, but I would encourage you to look at that. I know there was a, um, pay increase given to one of the staffers that was in the paper, uh, not too long ago, and, and I heard some comments from citizens that if, um, city manager can make $194,000 a year, why are we as citizens suffering so much with a tax bill and tax liability? So I wanted to bring that up, and also Happy New Year. Uh, it's the first time we've been able to gather together since the new year, and thank God for giving us another year, uh, to honor Him with. So Happy New Year, commissioners.
Ben Winholz Salina. Touchy subject, here we go again. Um, gonna give my thoughts on this. If you'll go to the Salina Tennis Alliance's website, uh, on their homepage, it says, "Through a generous support of local businesses, foundations, families, and other private donors, we were able to partner with the city of Salina and develop a 12-court community, community tennis center in Oakdale Park, completed in late 2022 and open to the public. The new tennis facility provides affordable clinics, lessons, open court usage, tournaments, and other opportunities for all ages and levels of tennis play." I reached out to Tennis, Salina Tennis Alliance today and got no response because yesterday I decided since I was in the area that, um, and it was 55 degrees, you hardly needed a jacket, there was no wind chill factor, boy, it'd be a darn good day to go out and play tennis. So I thought, well, since there's only three courts available in the city of Salina, let's just go see how many people are out there playing. Because according to the guru of the Salina Tennis Alliance, there's hundreds of people that play tennis in Salina. Going over there at 12 noon, it's totally locked up. I thought, okay, maybe they don't open up till one, cause it is Sunday. So went back at three, totally locked up. Now, my question is, they, according to their website, they're saying that it's not open yet because due to, but go by and drive by and look at the construction that's ongoing. There is not a single piece of construction equipment over there. It's completely done with sidewalks, fencing, lights, the courts, everything. Three nets are up and it's not open to the public. Why? Because there have been two studies and two advertisements that have come across Salina. One was from the Chamber of Commerce and one was from the city of Salina, trying to get younger people to come to this town and live here. And one of the things that these younger people probably would wanna do would be play tennis. So in a city right now, a city of 50,000-plus people, there is not one single tennis court available to this town, not one. So I wanna know, why is this? Is it the Salina Tennis Alliance has total control of this facility and they're keeping it locked up because they can't babysit it for the three courts that need, that can be used? Or what's the deal? Or are we waiting for the clubhouse? Uh, I would like to have an answer because this has been city taxpayers' money that's helped, a million dollars has helped put this complex together, and it's not even accessible to any citizen in Salina.
Thank you.
I'll try to offer a little bit of, and I'll, I'll follow up, but I think we are in transition in terms of punch list items and wrapping up the construction. I would acknowledge there's not much left, so we may just be in transition of it, it was secured and it hasn't been opened up. Uh, the intention is those three are available and I'll follow up with-
Back in, and back in the middle of November on Salina, uh, 311, it was noted, according to the Sal- the Salina Tennis Alliance, that within two weeks, it will be open. Those of you who would like to brave the cold can go out and use the three tennis courts.
I'm familiar with that article, that statement. I think we're caught in transition.
We're talking, yeah, we're, we're talking January, and it's still not open, and still not. I mean, it looks good, and I got nothing against tennis, nothing else. What I have a problem is with is it taxpayers' money being spent, and we can't even use it.
But that was the statement, that was the intent. I think we're caught in transition, I'll follow up.
Thank you.
Norman Mattle Salina. For future development, the Kansas Board of Water Resources is discussing to stop pumping some of our aquifers. It's going to affect this area. We're going to shut them down. In other states, we are removing the dams. In other states, these dams that are in the state of Kansas have not been built to requirements. I've watched that dam up in Washington State taken out. Conoplas is getting plugged up with silt. Milford is being plugged up with silt. John Redford is plugged up with silt. They're either going to have to clean them, or they're going to take out the dams. That one in Washington State, they put 800 pounds of dynamite in there. That was a big boom. But that's going to affect this area if we start taking out Conoplas, Milford, John Redford. It's still about water, guys. You're going to need water one of these days. If we don't have that dam at Conoplas to help you supply water for the Smoky River, where are you going to get your water? What are we filling up Jerry Ivy Pond with? What kind of material are you going to use? Going to use some of that crushed concrete? If you use the dirt out of the river channel, that's an environmental hazard. Where are you going to get the dirt to fill that? And if you do fill these ponds, you're not solving the problem, you're still going to have the runoff after you fill Jerry Ivy Pond. So just for your future references to keep in mind, you might think about that.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Ms. Meyer, Laney Meyer, we're going to unmute you.
Yes. Okay now?
Yes.
Okay, I want to first of all, say thank you to Mr. Farber. I'm glad he spoke, because he said a lot of what I wanted to mention, perhaps in a better way than me, but I just do want to agree with, we need more citizen involvement when it comes to the, the changing of the mayor. The citizens elected all of you to, to be advocates for, for us in Salina, so we have a right and responsibility to have input. I want to also mention, going down the road, Mr. Farber mentioned something about district. I haven't learned a lot about that yet, but I did want to say, I think that we need to move toward electing or dividing into districts, so we have a better representation of all of Salina, not just part of Salina with, when it comes to having a market. So I want to really hope you take that seriously. There are a number of citizens that agree with that, so please think about that, and I need to learn more about how to move toward that myself in terms of the district thing. And I want to thank you, Trent, for your, being the mayor. I'm impressed with the very intelligent questions you seem to ask, and you seem to be one, the one knowledgeable there. And I also want to thank Bill Longbine for, for his number of questions that he brought up. You both did a good job of, of discussing, so thank you.
Thank you for your kind words.
I might add to that, that I've heard this discussed a lot this past month. It's a totally different form of government than we currently have. And if it's a change the people want, the people need to make it. Us five up here aren't going to make that change, and I guess the start would be to petition to put it on a ballot and let the people decide.
All right, we are. Ms. Meyer, can you do it in 30 seconds? No, it was an accident, okay. I'll look at the rest of the commission. Five-minute break or keep moving?
Do we need a break?
Well, at our age, it never hurts to check. We're good?
I'm the oldest up here, I think. Okay.
All right. Okay. Well, I believe I am on the agenda. I'm going to depart from my usual preference, which is to stand up and talk, because there's 55 minutes between now and a football game that I'm sure y'all want to get to. And I'm not the person you want to hear from, so I will try to make this sweet. Mr. Wood, could you put up my one slide? Before you see it, close your eyes and imagine Santa Fe 10 years ago, all right? And, you know, I could have told you this was in Philadelphia, New York, Wichita, Kansas City, you would have believed me, other than for the Stiefel Theater sticking up there in that green. I'd say to everyone in town, job well done, this is fantastic. Just to see this street come back to life, and to know that the city is, not that we were dead, but we're, 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 we're getting better all around. Last year, economic, economic development made some major strides. We're still looking for workers to complete those strides, and with the workers, we'll be looking for housing and childcare, but, you know, the base, which is the job itself, we make great strides. We nudge the housing needle just a little bit, but at least we know where we want to get. Infrastructure remain high on our list. Infrastructure is not a glamour issue, but when it goes bad, or doesn't work, boy, do you hear complaints and people are dissatisfied. We're starting to budget for the future, not just respond to this year's immediate needs. We took a giant step forward at our city forum at the end of the year, when we shifted the focus just from the individual homeless person on the sidewalk to the issue of homelessness as an all-encompassing problem and process. So we're, we're ready to approach this from a much more holistic perspective. I'm going to start my closing now, but the closing is longer than the intro. There's some people who make our job appear very, very easy, or make it look easy. And as mayor, you know, I do function more as chairman of the board than mayor. I told my niece, you know, I don't have a key to the building, I can't decide to do anything unless two of these four agree with me. And then it's a group decision, it's not my decision. But I, we have shown, you know, that we can disagree without being disagreeable, and that's, that's the key to getting stuff done. We don't have to all have the same opinion. In fact, one of the most worrisome things is to sit up here for weeks on end, and everything passes 5-0, 5-0, 5-0, and you look out there, and there's just city employees, probably who have to be here, although they want, admit it, they wanted to come. But, you know, it's kind of like, God, does anybody listen? Does anybody care? Is any of this important? We could have mailed this in from home. So when we have discussion, it's not a sign of dysfunction, it's a sign that five people are looking at an issue from five different perspectives, and as a group effort, we should make a pretty good decision, and I, and I think, I think we do. City manager Mike Skreg and his staff, and department heads, city attorney, city clerk, we sometimes get credit when we know who's actually doing the work and the behind-the-scenes lifting, we truly do appreciate it. Holly McGuinness, who probably is home by now, probably watching us on TV, keeps the city manager's office running, keeps all of us organized, and if there's a true behind-the-scenes person, she's it. My office nurse Rhonda Haggard, along with my Salina regional family, who allows me to be available for events when, you know, I have to kind of stretch things, but they've been most gracious in allowing me to do that. Probably one of my favorite groups, depending on the issue, you're either the faithful five or the tenacious 10. But it's all of you citizens who come up here to the podium for Citizens Forum. I know sometimes I can tell, after teaching all these years, you really hadn't planned to talk on that issue today, but gosh, it's available, I mean, it's a free three minutes, why not come up? But that's all right. We need you to let us know what everybody is thinking, or at least what you guys have been. You'd be surprised how many good ideas we've received right from that, from that podium. But it's all right to write your remarks down the night before you come, all right? My trainer at Genesis, feel like I'm giving an Emmy Award presentation here. Allison, who actually does give exercises to keep my back from hurting when we sit up here for six hours. And I did not realize until halfway through the year, but the Episcopal Pool Cathedral here, in their service, actually does, in their prayers every week, does pray for the mayor by name and our commissioners. Somebody's been praying for us, because we, Reverend Farber said, we made it to another year. And any year you can be around to complain about is a great year. So somebody's looking out for us. Now, the, you may not be able to see it from down here, but each one of, I can actually say generically, these guys, because it is appropriate this year, receive one of these, and that's because, you know, we each have a special advisor that you guys don't get to see. Probably if we had the five of them get together, we'd get some action done on all these issues you bring up here. I've only given three speeches without my wife editing it, re-editing it, and re-editing it. Sounding board, morale booster, and fan club president. I'm going to step down here in a minute and give her these, but I want to make sure that we stay on, on task. Each one of us has that special person, and we are indebted to all five of you for allowing us to be able to do what we do. I'm quite happy to turn the reins over to our incoming mayor and vice mayor. This is the time in the transition, which is fun, because we already have momentum working together, we know how to converse with each other, so we will hit the ground running in 2023. I'm going to close with two quotes. One is attributed to Eleanor Roosevelt, but it said, "Small minds discuss people. Average minds discuss events. Great minds discuss ideas." And I think when we had that homeless session, you could see that we were, we were moving from the people to the idea phase. If as a community we can do that, there's nothing here that we, we can't solve. The second comes from Dabo Sweeney, the Clemson football coach, who, my wife has me listening to Joel Osteen a lot, love him or not, you know, he's got some good messages. But he was up there talking, and, and he, he said something which I just found profound, and it said, he said, "Let the light in you shine brighter than the light on you." None of us is more important than us collectively. You know, we're here because of how we feel to serve you. You know, when it gets to the point that we're working because it makes us look better, then we need to leave. So we appreciate all of you for keeping us humble, and it's a pleasure, has been a great pleasure being your mayor. We have a recess in the organizational meeting, which will give me 60 seconds to run it out and deliver my roses personally. Thank you.
I wish you brought her to the podium, Mayor.
I will now consider a motion to recess the regular meeting for the purpose of conducting an organizational meeting, which will be directed by our city clerk.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to recess into, to recess the regular meeting for the purpose of conducting an organizational meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. We will now turn the meeting over to our city clerk.
Okay, I will now call the organizational meeting of January 9, 2023, to order and proceed with a roll call. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Here.
Commissioner Longbine?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Nominations are now in order for the office of mayor and chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Madam Clerk, I would like to nominate for Commissioner Mike Hoppick as mayor and chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
I will second that.
Are there any further nominations?
No, I move the nominations be closed.
Okay, so the nominations for mayor and chairman of the Board of Commissioners are closed. Is there any discussion? Okay, we will now take a roll call vote on the nomination of Commissioner Hoppick to be elected mayor and chairman of the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick has been elected. That concludes the election process for mayor and chairman of the Board of Commissioners. Nominations are now in order for the office of acting mayor and vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Madam Clerk, I nominate Commissioner Longbine to serve as acting mayor and vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Are there any further nominations? Seeing none, the nominations for acting mayor and vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners are closed. Is there any discussion? We will now take a roll call vote on the nomination of Commissioner Longbine to be elected acting mayor and vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine has been elected. That concludes the election process for mayor and chairman of the Board of Commissioners. I will now turn the meeting back over to the new mayor.
Well, as my first act as mayor, I have a couple things to present to you and a few words to say, and I know this is your happiest day as a commissioner, stepping away from the mayorship. Those of us that have served before understand the time that's, that's involved, and we greatly appreciate the dedication that you have given to your position. I've had the pleasure of serving twice under you as mayor, and it's like a fine wine, you get better with age, and you've done, but you've done well. As I was thinking of what to say today, I thought of Mayor, Commissioner Ryan, and yourself, serving on this commission for seven years, and you showed a picture of downtown, and I think of all the. And I think of all the progress that this community has made under your leadership under the last seven years. And we're all, as a community, grateful for that. We're fortunate to have the synergy we have now and to keep that moving forward. Commissioner Davis, we have both a plaque and a gavel here that states, "In recognition of service rendered by Trent M. Davis, M.D., as mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, January tenth, twenty twenty-two, to January ninth, twenty twenty-three." And we hope you place this somewhere and remember the good deeds and the good work that's been done at the commission level. Thank you. Before we sit down and I make my remarks, you know, we all five as commissioners handle things differently. And many times I go home at night and my wife will comment to me how well you have handled a difficult situation. And I'm not sure I can always step into those shoes and handle it as well as you do. But I am gonna have a plaque made that's gonna be sitting up here that says, "What Would Trent Do?" Because I believe that you've always led by example. And I will try to follow in your footsteps and make this the community proud. You will do quite well. Thank you.
Before I get started with my remarks, I'd like to congratulate someone that's in the audience here. We have a former city commissioner that was sworn in as county commissioner today, Mr. Joe Hay. We appreciate your service. As a city commission, we look forward to working with the county commission and moving the community forward. So thank you again for your service. As, I'm gonna quote my wife again. She's always told me, when you're making a speech, you wanna keep 'em wanting more. So I'm gonna try to keep this somewhat short. But as Mayor Davis and I discussed, as we start looking at what's going on in our community, it's hard not to wanna talk because we have so much going on and so much to be proud of. I have always considered serving on the Salina City Commission as community service. And I feel that serving as mayor is no different. I will do my best to run our meetings in a professional manner. And when asked to attend various functions, my remarks will be those that represent this commission as a group. I am fortunate to be serving with four other dedicated commissioners. I appreciate the fact that each commissioner comes to this meeting prepared and willing to state their stance on various issues. As Mayor Davis, Commissioner Davis, I guess I must call you now, it's gonna be hard. I ask that we continue to conduct ourselves professionally, even when disagreeing with one another. And to quote Mayor Davis, and this may not be an exact quote, but I remember him telling us as a commission a few years ago that it's good that we have a debate and discussion and bring up different views on a subject. A three-two vote is not always a bad thing. Currently, our city is in a good place when it comes to working with our partners. Currently, I am very pleased at the way our city staff and our commission works with Saline County, the Salina Economic Development Organization, Salina Area Chamber of Commerce, Salina Airport Authority, USD three oh five, Kansas State Salina, and I'm sure I've left some out. But it's good to see us as a cohesive group trying to move the community forward. This has not always been such. And I'm appreciative of the current commissioners and how we've helped build that bridge and continue to move forward. Even though things are going well, there's still things we must address in 2023. We must continue to implement the new pay plan that was approved in 2022. Hopefully, this will allow the city of Salina to get closer to full employment. You know, we hear about the shortage of police officers, which, again, is a national issue. But we have many departments that are running below optimal staffing. So hopefully, the pay plan will help us to raise that and to fill some positions that we need to fill. We need to address items yet to be completed per the Park Master Plan that was approved several years ago. I think we've made strides, but there's still a lot on that list to be completed. And no matter how much you plan, there's always something that comes up, i.e. the blue-green algae at Jerry Ivy Park. We'll be spending money on that to address that. And again, those are things that we wouldn't wanna have to spend money on, but we have no choice. We have been blessed with several local employers expanding their operations in the last couple of years. This has also caused concern. As former Mayor Davis mentioned, we still need to look at bringing a qualified workforce to Salina. We need to beat the housing needs to meet that expected population growth. We currently, as you've probably heard, have an RFP out, which is a request for proposal, to build up to five hundred apartments units here in Salina. I believe that we need to go back to the stakeholders, those employers who have told us they are bringing new jobs to the community, to verify that those jobs are still coming, to verify when they will be here. Because the one thing we don't wanna do is to build too much too fast and to have empty apartments. This is a hard balancing act that city staff and this commission will deal with, but I believe we can meet that goal. The 2016 housing study and its most recent update has been very helpful in us identifying the number of housing units needed and also identifying the numerous tools that we can use to help with the expanded housing needs. One of the things that I personally would like to see us do as a commission, and I spoke to the city manager, Mike Scragg, about this, is to have a study session with the CHODO, which is known as the Community Housing Development Corporation of Central Kansas. This group is making significant strides in the rehabilitation of properties in Salina. They have received grant money from the Greater Salina Community Foundation, which has allowed them to purchase properties, rehab them, and then sell them to owner-occupied individuals. And these are properties that were in dire need of improvements. They've received ARPA funds from Saline County to help with the winterization of owner-occupied homes. And the CHODO recently just purchased forty-four homes in Salina that are being updated and will be rented to low-to-moderate-income families. I believe we, as the city of Salina, should see if there are opportunities for us to help them in their mission. I've asked staff to put together a 2023 strategic planning meeting during the first quarter of this year. The city has seen its reserve balances increase significantly over the last few years. And I think we should take a hard look at where we are and how to move forward. Part of that is, one, looking at the current needs that we are able to address this year. Two, how can these funds be used to help with long-term planning? And three, can we perhaps look at having a revenue-neutral property tax and mill levy this year? I think those are things, as a commission, we need to look at and hopefully be able to address. Again, it's a pleasure to serve as mayor, as it is a pleasure to serve as a commissioner. And I think Commissioner Davis said it, that all of our families have to give up some time when we serve on the commission. If you do it right, and I believe this commission does, they take the time to study, to look at each issue and move it forward. I would finally like to thank my wife, Polly, who's out here in the audience, for her support to serve as mayor and also to serve as commission. Because at times, you look at maybe having to move a vacation or missing something that's going on. And probably the most important reason that I serve on this city commission is sitting in the audience. That's my daughter, Erin McCorkle, who's sitting here, and my three grandchildren, Beckett, Greeley, and Maisie. That's the future of Salina. That's the reason a lot of us give our time and wanna see Salina continue to grow and be a place where those young people will want to stay and live as they grow up. Thank you very much, and I look forward to the next year. With that, we still have time to make the game, so...
Mayor was buying pizza.
With that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Motion is second. We are adjourned. Thank you.